What did she study?
Bike.
And I was like, how do you play that? She wanted me to... I was like, you. She could really good at it.
She would be a teacher?
Yeah.
So the communication oriented was by Rebecca Fannin. Did she leave? She got hired at Westfield from Rose Point?
Yeah, she was early.
I just remember you and I standing there going, is this what they do? Is this what they do? Yeah, yes, it is.
And then I talked to someone else in a different, disparate way.
It's the same thing?
It's the same. And then another one today, or this morning, who's like, if I set that same communication, I get to be that opposite response, that wired.
Okay, fine. Isn't that funny?
Are they playing tonight?
Are they playing tonight?
No, they, uh, I think the Frozen Four isn't even this week, it's next week. Like, there's a whole, there's like a 13 or 14 day between the regionals.
Did you play?
I played hockey, but no, I didn't. I played, uh, I did play one year.
You went there?
Yeah. Are you coming to school?
Yes, I am.
Are you coming Thursday?
Yes, I am.
You're gonna be here Friday, school doesn't have no kids?
Well, there's no kids.
Those are on break. We made everything that works.
Hey, so they said something about, I know.
They said something about training.
I got it. Let's turn off the clock at like 9:05, so take care of your day.
I'll be in the morning too, so.
No. Frozen Four.
That's got a new job.
I'm doing a... I'm trying it out. He's good. Because it's like honey pay. Berkeley Kings, Queens, D C Rangers. We, uh, Michigan State. They have a new coach because Michigan always forgets. National, national concert tickets. Michigan State in Arkansas. They still are seeing. They've drafted three more. And, uh, they sort of...
All right, you ready? We are starting. Welcome to the Tuesday, April 2nd, 2024, where we're at the future workshop. We've got all my present. Do we have any more communication? Okay, I move to business services.
Mr. Press. Yes, let's get it. The first one is the special revenue funds. We've got three of them to present to you tonight. The food service, community service, and for preschool fund. I think we all are familiar with what these account for. This like details. We look at the food service fund highlights first. We reconcile all contractual obligations. That's what their chart calls group. We had a brief conversation about the average participation rate. It is up, given that all meals are free right now. So we are seeing consistent, consistent increase in that. It does create a little bit of challenge, uh, to staff, you know. But we are working through that and it's all been fine. Projected $397,000 surplus this year. We do anticipate a $3.4 million fund balance at the end of the year. 1.9 million anticipated excess fund balance. That's another one to currently have. We already spent on plan, uh, which I will be reviewing tomorrow. It's due to this date, uh, Thursday for the current. So we're going to be investing in equipment and in the program. As everybody else. We have put some money back because of recruitment retention of staff too. Some of that has gone into the salary benefits. And we're going to continue to look for those opportunities to make sure that staff for the additional participation. So we will be working through that. This is what it looks like graphically. We recall this, something like five years ago, it was a 3.5 million dollar fund. And now we're looking at $6.3 million revenue. You can see this is, it has been established as a priority in the government budget again to offer universal meals. So we'll see where that goes throughout the budget process, but we're anticipating this same program, this similar program next year. Probably worth noting and making sure you guys all understand, we are currently in the RFP process. Every five years is a mandatory rebid. So we had our prebid meeting at Troy High, um, right before break, Thursday before break. And we have four members come out. So we will just issue our first addendum to that, uh, to the RFP. It's about 15 questions or so. So there is going to be some interest in that. We will evaluate those bits, uh, when we do, end of this month. And we're looking for more either early June or later.
So it was big.
I was not there, so I don't, I don't.
I assume so.
My own most successful was there, but the S L B was there. And actually, we, we have some new ones. I think, but you probably can see the emails too. There were companies that showed interest back in January from a different state. So we'll see where that goes. But our food service fund is healthy. We will continue to look for investment opportunities back to make, uh, to improve quality, to make sure we're staffing appropriately. Make sure that we have the most up-to-date, appropriate equipment and the priorities and improvement.
Can we use this money to buy the toilet for our infant?
Uh, we could in the appropriate year. So maybe when we're looking at next year, when we know we're going to get the safe ladder from the state, uh, we could maybe set aside. The issue is that building isn't going to be online until late 26. And we have requirements to spend this within the fiscal year. So it's going to be a timing issue. I anticipate if we continue with universal meals, that there's going to still be opportunities and we will be able to. We're going to invest where we can. There, there's enough needs out there right now, the timing. The timing's always interesting, uh, how quickly we could spend it, how fast we can do projects. Because we're, you know, we have to have someone basically in some of these, some of these issues. So if it's not just the equipment replacement, if they do renovation, we can't carry on that.
Can we use this also for the terrorist campaign and stuff like that?
No.
Terrorist campaign, no, we have to incorporate use of. Can we talk about improving food quality, increasing our food costs, knowing that we've got ongoing profit? And it's like, let's see if we can translate that into better quality.
That is. Yeah. Portions are controlled. Portion sizes are controlled during regulations.
I just think about raising food costs to save what's, what's going to happen to quality.
That's part of our evaluation.
It is, okay.
This year, we're going to be looking at quality ideas, menu selection, diversity of menu.
Yeah, did Chirco ever come back with, when they did this project, one of the things they talked about was this phenomenal recipe box they got? And that they could tackle a lot of our, which we had our different nationalities that they hit some different flavor profiles. And then COVID had everything fall apart. Have they tried to?
That is, there are some programs at both of our high schools where there's some diversity.
Yeah. Okay, that you're seeing.
Specifically stations, they do. They might be in middle schools too. They, they don't do it in elementary as much, but, uh, the middle schools have the stations as well. So they have, they have attempted to. It's gaining more momentum this year than it has coming high COVID. And that's, that's something we're going to evaluate as well.
It's kind of that was sure because if you move a 53% up because we increased the quality of food, the problem will come in. But I, my thought was this is, uh, this is an opportunity to make sure.
It is, it's always been healthy. So that's, that's part of the job of the food service department is to try to increase, uh, quality, increase participation, um, within the restrictions we have. So that is, um, that's that one, community service funds. We're also reconciled. We're looking at a $131,000 operating deficit. Still a healthy fund balance here. And this is primarily, there was no federal childcare stabilization funds recognized in the fund for. We were able to do some, uh, quality stuff with those funds in the past, previous years. I think the main takeaway that, the fund as a whole is healthy. But when you look at, um, this side, when you break it down by care company and community recreation, we need to look at our care company fee for service. What we're going to do from a district-wide standpoint, we're going to assemble a collaborative team and we're going to look at all of our fee-based services. And we know, just living in the society right now, the inflationary effect that has occurred. And I think this quarter, we should still look at, do like our fee-based services and see in what inappropriate inflationary influences. And we're going to do that collaboratively, uh, you know, invest in air, you know, in temperature, which means we have an athletic standpoint and we'll swing that too.
That was my question.
Yeah. The capital outlay was the, um, furniture. We bought furniture with some of the stabilization funds.
For the actual stage stuff?
Are we allowed to use any food service money for furniture that because those are in the area? So like, should we use? Would you buy more flexible furniture that you could have cafeteria?
We, we can look at that cafeteria, kitchen area. We have to be careful again, it's all prescribed, so we have to work with the PD on, on that if we are. I do believe there's some opportunities. I think we would have asked, bought cafeteria tables for some of the buildings and those are opportunities. But when we're talking about flexible seating and the whole dining experience, I think there might be some, some opportunities as well to see how we can creatively use the food service funds. The care company, because they're licensed to those programs, we were able to buy some cafeteria tables as well of, of those funds. And that's what that capital probably gave. How they was. And then our community recreation.
That's not something that's going to be, I mean, that's not something that's going to be.
No, no. No, so you take that out. Yeah, you take that out. The structural imbalance is not too concerning to me, but we also have to look at the service we're providing. And we've gotten, you all written emails about the service quality as well and making sure that we're providing the service that is demanded. And I think there's opportunities to dig deep into care as well. And the preschool fund is, is a separate fund. This is something that's going to get some attention this spring. From a package standpoint, uh, looking at the fee-based services. And then looking at the preschool fund, we got a $451,000 projected operating surplus. It says, as we like to continue to tell, a self-esteem fund, it covers its own debt and has a projected operating surplus. We're looking at a $2.3 million projected fund balance here. The universal preschool initiative for, um, is ongoing. That conversation's ongoing and we'll see where it ends. But again, the stabilization funds for this fund are, are all in this figure as well. I, yes, there's a proposal, um, that, that. So looking at this again, it's got significant amount. And again, we'll work with Erin, we'll work with Chris, um, and how we might invest, uh, invest in that money in the program.
Have you ever considered hiring a, like a secondary person? Assistant director? I mean, we have, so that she has somebody else and she's not in the building.
Um, well, they, they currently have an assistant, um, that works there. Yes, Chris, uh, Chris and Erin have both had that conversation and, and we, we acted on it.
You know, we're not really conservative out there. She's got probably direct reports, does she, 16, 16, five, how many do you know? You know?
I think it was about 100 employees in the preschool.
100 and.
100.
100 employees. So I mean, it's like, if you look at, at our administration, she's got like a middle school level people and now she's got classrooms that are remote. And I'm, and she's got two thirds of her staff are less than three years tenure. How are we maintaining quality for professional development? Like, I feel like she needs somebody more than, she doesn't need an assistant, she needs like an assistant director up there, like a.
Yeah, well, she is. My name is, so this.
Linda Stinko.
Linda, Linda Stinko is certain an assistant, right? I mean, she's, so that's, that's ongoing conversation that we can certainly look at, we can look at.
I mean, it's exciting that we've got $450,000 there, but, you know, we wanted this to be self-staying, right? But the primary thing that we wanted to, we want to make sure we're investing the money we need to have a quality program. And so if that tells me we have money for extra help there, we need it. I'm just really worried about Anna burning out on us. She's, she's, she's not complaining, but she's got a heavy load. She carries a heavy load compared to our other building administrators.
I mean, heavy load aside, but we have, there's easily comparisons between how many students are at elementary level, how many, how many employees an elementary school has. Looking at how many employees middle school principal has and then doing the math and figuring out where we, where we need to be.
That's, well, that's a lot of which we've currently looked at and we've, at least from my lens, it was more of an elementary. But this is a conversation staffing level, isn't it?
But you say number of students, but my answer is the number of employees.
I mean, I've talked to Rich about it before, but I just, when I, these numbers come through and I'm like, we have enough money to not burn out Eric High School. And, and that's, I just am really worried about burning out that person.
About 500 in total in our progress. So when we establish like how many assistant principals there are at a school, we typically base that a number of students or do we also appropriate number of staff? But because in elementary, at a preschool, you're inherently going to have more staff because the ratios of law have to be different than they have to be.
You also have all the regulations associated with it. There's a lot of administrative.
So it's not quite like in elementary school, but it's not quite like in a, so there can, it has to be some consideration.
We can certainly deal with that.
There might be some opportunity to reassign some staff. Good. So this kind of breaks it down.
This was something to me first time. Now it's that old preschool, our paid preschool is.
Yeah, so there's some subsidy from the Young Five's program, right? That's where the money is and that's.
Is the Young Five's, I mean, the.
Young Five's.
The Young Five's is relatively small, right? But so the Young Five's program is that something that we anticipate continuing in this form for years to come?
It's been pretty consistent, hasn't it? I mean, particularly.
For the last few years, and this is, this is also some of the accounting we've taken, taken this program, accounting for those, the comments in our general fund. We do a comment to, uh, conference, because it's actually based.
In preschool.
So you can also see the preschool tuition. I, we don't allocate that across those programs either, which we could do, so that we. That's what I'm saying.
So, right, yeah.
So there's no allocation method to spread that out over the four of those programs.
It's the debt service.
It's all, you, you focus more on the right-hand side, the bottom right, it's still a healthy pocket.
So if you get, if you take away the debt service, it's a huge percentage of it, yeah.
Yeah, based on students, I, I don't think it's necessarily.
And then explorers here, that's your safe comment about care company. As you were saying, we need the inflationary.
Yes.
Because that's a, that's easy dream. So why, why do we give to this one here? I mean, if they sit in elementary schools now, right?
Nope, some of them aren't entirely, aren't entirely. And it's part of our preschool.
Program, it just so happened to sit in elementary schools.
Most of them are in.
And that's an in and out, that 49 could be, we have to account for that.
What percentage of them are in elementary schools versus?
We have five right now because, uh, we wanted to, we chose them to look back. We have so many students now that we're pushing back because of the transportation barrier, we're not pushing back to make sure that, that they set that up. So we have five sections, we have two in the preschool.
Five total, two in the preschool. So three outside the preschool, two in.
Oh, three in elementary schools and two in preschool. What is the preschool tuition for full-time?
About 10,000 annually.
I assume you've done, I assume, I assume you've done cross-shopping. Are we still kind of in the middle? I don't know if we started.
We're, we're going to have to do that. We have.
You have done that since we.
Uh, no, we've done it in between, but we're going to do again as a, as part of the.
It was interesting, I was listening to something about, I think, about this morning, and, um, there was a program on, on child care, early childhood education. And he said, your early childhood education average is 28, yeah, but maybe 12, 12, incredible year.
When we did a finance research call, I set up a committee, a preschool committee, and at that time, like 17 years, we calculated 13 plus thousand dollars. 2017 or 16 plus. So they're probably still around to choose, yeah.
It was special on that last slide. Are the dates also?
Yeah, they're yours.
Well, we're going to recommend, but it's not consent. Anyway, all just.
So the dates are.
All just those.
I was just wondering if like if I'm misunderstanding.
The devils be 24, 25, but to be a final life, you have 20, 24. So all of them are on.
I think the hatters is in the other slide, in most of the slides are all.
Yeah.
Um, I reposted for the record. Okay. The, this, she's also interested. You're not looking for a finance director now?
Oh, no.
So the next thing is the switchgear, uh, real quick, the Smith Middle School switchgear. We did the external transponderings a few months ago. This is the inside, the inside switchgear, um, needed for the electricity. This is a worst-case scenario. I was informed of that today. They, they did the prebid, um, you saw the results, uh, so $450,000. There was an alternative in the package, um, that they're still evaluating, so this would be a risk scenario of the $450,000.
The lowest bill was 100 and something thousand. Did we disregard it for some reason?
Yeah. We had a different project. It was a different.
They did the wrong.
They did the wrong. That's right.
That's a little awkward.
Yes. So we'll be bringing that forward as well.
You must have been materially confused when you opened that packet.
Yeah, well, I was.
You're looking at what, what, what? Yeah, I didn't say this, you want to ask me?
So that's it?
Okay. Any other questions? You asked a little too many.
That was it? I still get harassed for being a long-term agent.
I was like, David, I was reading the Bible.
There you go, Matt.
The first Bible there, you almost got the, all the, all the...
I suppose I'm gonna fix my shirt.
Everybody be under one.
If you could read it.
That's true. All right, so I forgot, but I did read, I did finish reading it, so, yeah. Um, so, everybody related through to that section one, so, I don't have a lot of discussion here, I just wanted to know what, what did people think for that benefit? At the end of that section for me is, uh, the latter half of that section to me is really powerful, right? I, I love the, the, there's, I get it marked in my, for six close, and about, um, we are, who we, what we see, it's not, what we see is not...
It's the perception. It's perception, we see things as we are.
Yeah, and, yeah, we see, it's not, oh, that's it, we don't see things as they are, we see things as we are, and, and I thought that was a really, a powerful statement.
And it kind of goes to a, underlying a purpose, which is a person's point of view, like we, we're all convinced that... The way that we're interpreting a situation is objective.
Is the accurate representation, yeah.
And it happens to be, now we, now we see it from our point of view. Which I think could be really helpful in lots of different, you know, situations.
Well, there's, I was gonna say, this whole thing is like really helpful in a lot of different scenarios. The, the thing that I thought, one example that I thought was really helpful was the, um, when you talked about listening, is if somebody's telling a story that's alarm, and then like we tend to tune out around the hello, trying to...
We don't make it to the fingertips, right?
Or delay our own responses, and the Japanese culture of like when people are talking, like forcing like ten seconds of silence before you let people talk to the people. And I just was like, how often, I, you know, I go to you and like, I'm like, and just that run like there that like giving people, like, listening all the way through is scheduling a pause to come up with questions as opposed to...
We don't have the linkage.
Being so eager to ask that we're not listening to the rest of the conversation.
And, and that made me, I mean, we think about a lot of cultural differences, we're very multicultural. Just trying to come in, that conversations with parents, I was about to shut up, let, let, I agree, that was about seven seconds of fill for pepper, you're sitting there.
But I thought that was a good visual, like, like, listen all the way through.
It also minded, you're saying to the, the average person says a hundred, twenty to a hundred, whatever the number is of words per minute. And that part of the reasons to make it, people tune you out is that it doesn't occupy the brain enough, and so it tries to find other, that's how I agree, you know, like, it tries to find other inputs to keep itself busy, and so, how do you listen to people that are, who are maybe tired of it, keep yourself busy?
Right, do something...
A wall of knitting.
I'm, 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 I'm not, I'm not, I can, I can, I can answer something and then, yeah, I'm not your focus.
Every, every conference I go to, there's always a couple of people who are knitting or crochet, and they're like, oh yeah, then I could actually listen.
I see kids doing it to sustain their jobs.
Okay.
Presentation, and they're engaged, because there's a lot of, it means, it's quite flattering to have a little smudge.
Yeah, but it's a, it's a, you know...
And I doodled a lot, so I wonder if that's the, you know, doing just a piece of paper is, you know, subconsciously to occupy my mind, you know, yeah. Do you know, I think the thing that resonated with me was very conscious of the first challenge, and that is aware of the efficiency optimization mindset.
As we think about interacting with students, helping students understand that like everything's not what happens to people. I think that's an important point, listen.
It could be the opposite too. What we all do is because of the experiences we have for each of us.
Yeah, the second half of this first part hit me because of working with foster kids, that so much of being with foster kids is shutting out their own mouth. And, and I love the midwife model, which is I'm gonna help you, I'll be there to facilitate, but it's really hard sometimes because you realize very quickly, they don't really care that much about you. That they're trying to work through their issues and, and a lot of the things that I'm reading here, I'm like, oh yeah, these are things I've learned over time, that if you don't do it, you won't get anywhere. But if you, if you meet with them, you do that, if they, suddenly they start trusting you because they think you are generous and what I said, you know? And for a lot of these kids, they haven't, they haven't been in a situation where anyone has cared what their feelings.
Isn't even also been, I remember a story, I don't know which one it is, where this lady lost her cat. She went to a friend's wedding, and she saw the father and the daughter having a dance. And she just ran off to the bathroom to breathe, and then her entire table was right there outside. They didn't say it would, but the fact that they were there is what we were feeling, okay, they want our support.
You've been with foster parents for many years. Have you seen a change in your, maybe in deceptive, or evidence to your foster children? Be deceptive and see a change in what you do as opposed to how they react?
Oh, I think, you know, if I go back to Elijah that I actually had at my house, and I don't, if I knew then what I know now, there's so many things I've dropped from that family. But the, the two that I've had since that I've worked with, due to the work system, they're all very different, they're different, I mean, obviously all have different experiences, but pain comes from a similar place, you know, and their frustrations come from a similar place.
All male or?
All, yeah.
And if, if, if a group years ago, your first parents, would this have changed some of the things you experience?
Oh, yeah, yeah. This section here, well, what, I, I think I learned through the School of Hard Knocks, a lot of the things in this first section, right? And it's like, that's, it's like, for my second court assigned foster, it's like, okay, I know how to start. I know how to, like, you're very, one of the things they talk about, well, the midwife is a good example. Like, when I had my last foster, within a couple of weeks of meeting him, we built a raised garden bed for his grandma. And why did we do that? Because I can sit and stare at the table, and I don't know who, but I, but we're doing something together, you know? That's, that's, and it's one of the things I notice is that they will talk to you if you're in the car, and you're both looking straight ahead, they sing like canaries. When you sit across from a table in a restaurant, suddenly they're like, I don't think, I'm fine. But it, but I have the deepest revelations from these kids when I'm driving home, and it's not just in the car, and it's like they're by themselves, and they, and it's almost like they just, the motives are talking about the things that bother them, you know? So, yeah, now, like, so a lot of this stuff, when I look at it, it's like, there are things I'm going, oh, I, I kind of learned to do some of this just because I thought, you find out what works, it's like, oh, but I didn't know I was working until I read the book, and I'm like, okay.
Very applicable in what you're doing in relation to what you're reading here. There's Parwath's group, I'm seeing that put in real life action.
Resembrant of what it says about the Lord of the Lord.
Yes.
And experiencing, not even experiencing, it's fuzzy, you use the word.
It's like one with your.
One with the.
Yeah.
Well, I think you guys think about the concept of being leanable.
Oh.
Oh, I can ask you.
Yeah.
Now, people that are leanable.
I always thought this was creating.
No, I, I have people like that, I have people like that that are like, oh, stay a little longer, you know? Stay and watch it move. But I do think that it's really good about, like, showing all these people's task is the reason they're leanable is because they, they value the company, your company, you know? And it kind of resonates.
They just, to, to read what you're offering, which I'm not giving any input. I just thought it was interesting.
We all, we all, yes.
People that are leanable.
Yeah.
They're not like, they're not like, they're like, talking, like, okay, I gotta go.
Yes.
That's maybe, I think, you know, a lot, but I kind of like.
The, in that last part, I also like that, I don't know what you're talking about, with the, with the professor that offered to be a university president?
Oh, yes.
And way of practice of the, the fairness treaty. Okay, how amazing would you be with a sitting room of people that are completely non-dupated?
Yeah.
And are there to just ask you questions that you really feel able to honestly answer, like, like, when he says, you know, why do you want to be, you know, university president? Maybe I just want my, I want a big desk.
There are easier ways to do that, yeah.
Is there a way that you get it? But do you have a place where you actually feel, it's a stupid reason to be university president, right? It's, it's a lot of work and responsibility and all of these things, they had to remain, you know, just wanted to give them somewhere. But for there to be these institutions and structures where there's an actual place where you can really say what's on your mind, so you can say it out loud, and be like, oh, yeah, let's use this topic, you know? Having, think about all of these, like, midlife decisions, and maybe you would do differently if you could just, you know, honestly spoken to, spoken out.
The thinkers are interesting, they have some good ideas. I, I like, you know, a lot of those questions that are in the, like, page ninety. I looked those and I thought, oh, wow, those are really tough questions, that what crossroads are you at? What would you do if you weren't afraid? You mean, I like, if we need a year from now, when will we celebrate? But it's funny, because I'll never remember this in a, in a situation to ask them, but I did think it was, it's, it's interesting to, it, it, to me, it encourages you to say, I need to know someone else more important, right? So I want to go beyond all of us have our daily, daily routines, right? And questions like that allow permission for the person here with, you know, maybe they don't know, but also maybe they, maybe there is something there.
I was listening to Andy Allen, he was talking about that question, I think it's, um, the question, depending on the questions that you pass this apart, so tiny, and he says, go on. So what kind of questions, and yet so much of the questions is long, which it answers, what the other person. I don't know, it's just sort of strange, but, you know, they need to add.
We, in focus for moderating, that's one of the things, you have to allow awkward silence, because if you let someone, sometimes you sit, you ask a question they don't answer, and you just sit there and stare at them, you know? And they realize, well, I guess, yeah, I guess I need to say more, you know, and these are going, but it is very hard for a new moderator, because they're like, oh, I'm failing, because the conversation's not going, and sometimes those awkward silence is where I really think you're staying.
She really didn't take me into teaching.
Yeah.
It's also like, you know, okay, I wasn't gonna say anything, but I'll say something.
Right. As you went through the rest of this section, I guess, my question is, do you have, what are implications for us interacting with constituents? What impact do we have for, you know, especially when we have challenging conversations? Is there any, as you finish this section, did anybody say, oh, maybe we need to do this differently, or maybe we should think more about that? Or did anybody apply that to?
I was gonna say, kind of goes, having difficult conversations, finding disagreement under the disagreement. What is the, what are we, what is the real issue, right? It's, it's, sometimes people will even throw facts at each other, you know, back and forth, but there's something that's under, of course, it's completely under value. Like, what is the value judgment? But it's, what is the real, is at the bottom of the page, what is the moral philosophy? Moral, yeah, the value, the values disagreement, that was the whole point. So what is the, what is the, what is the values disagreement? What, what is it that we're really disagreeing about? So then you can actually have a conversation from that as opposed to maybe even throwing that, you know, back to that before.
Chris and I had one of those, I still remember a conversation, not with each other, but we were on the same side. At the table, we were trying to understand Eric, who was really upset, and forty-five minutes into the conversation, she said, you know, well, the real issue is that we took God out of the classroom, and it was like, that was the disagreement under disagreement. And it was like, all of a sudden, it was like, okay, now we can talk about that. And, and Courtney was with us, and, and he handled it really well, but, but it was, but then when I read that section, it made me think of that conversation where I'm like, okay, it's better to get that out of the table, to understand the disagreement under the disagreement, and then maybe there's an opportunity to talk about, if you can't meet halfway, at least understand why you think.
Sometimes what I'm interested is when you have this agreement, and there's someone who's always trying to, you know, sometimes post conversation, saying, you would have, you know, that kind of factor, it's very similar to.
Right.
About causing your question, obviously, like, everybody's, you know, helping themselves, and, and causing the restrictions without, you know, like, very similar to that, as you keep it going.
I mean, he makes it very clear here about you sharing the conversation, right? It's like, no, 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 it's like, if you have any hope of reaching resolution, you have to talk to the person, and that's, I know that's been your general strategy is super attached, is to try to sit down with people, and he, certainly he would say that's the only way you're got any chance of reaching resolution.
I was gonna say, that, I mean, I know that we can't be rid of public comment.
Right.
This shows you just how useless public comment is, because it doesn't allow for any, it doesn't allow.
It's just reading it and replying.
And so, the idea, but, yeah, I, like I said, the things that I thought were most helpful for us are that idea of like, pausing and thinking, and then the disagreement with the disagreement, and keeping, keeping the genesis center, like, keeping the thing at this, like, we're a learning organization, there's a role to keep learning at the center, which it was like to keep, like, and not let some of the, the incidentals become the, not that the minors become dangers, that probably want to put a slight raise around this, but just making sure that when our interactions with people, that we don't let something that is inconsequential to the purpose of a school, like, what is it, what is our, what is our goal? And I think some things we'd be really good at, like, just telling people that that's not our jurisdiction, and then other times we make something that gets sucked into, yeah, the frame, and trying to head to center, we make, what are we doing in order to be those spaces?
I also have some implications for how we need to be, or, right?
Only that we can think of public comment and give this, yes, I know, because listening to the public comment, and then we do, we silence, we close down. And doing, sometimes I feel that it would be better for us, first of all, to acknowledge, yes, I understand your concern. Um, we, I agree with you in these aspects, but then there are these counter-aspects possibly. So acknowledging and saying that we know everything, but still we have these concerns as well, but we also have these other concerns. Now, is it to solve the problem, or to acknowledge what they're saying?
The superintendent posted, read, Carl comes in, in the form that you explain what our responsibilities at that point are, you know, if there is something that needs follow-up, that will follow up.
Yeah, I think you don't want it, I mean, the way the school was set up, it is not to engage in, like it or not, you know? But I think, I, I'll, I'll talk to you, I'll point, so I have this, this.
But I think in, in spirit of what you're saying, I keep thinking about our, we can say that, if we look at how we phrase that, maybe we say, you know, the least productive way to address the board is through public comment, right? And, and what we recommend is if you have a concern, that you sit down with us. So we welcome your comment today, and would you, and then within the form, say, would you like us to set up, you know, a meeting with you so we can discuss this in person? Or somehow to, to phrase the sheet of papers, so someone coming in knows, you will, I mean, it says in there right now, I think it says specifically, but when I was looking at it, I thought, I wonder if there's a friendly opener, you know, or if that, I was gonna try to play with that in the last one, I tried, but I, but I still think maybe helping the public set expectations and literally saying something like, the least productive way to address the board education is to, is to have public.
Well, and I feel, so, how about, it's one, to get to what you were saying, it's not practical, you can't have a human aid conversation back and forth. Realistically speaking, a lot, I would say, a number of people who come to address us are not there for an actual conversation or a dialogue. They are there to publicly report their comments for something else. And so that is not, if you're not there to actually have a conversation, to see what your disagreement is about, and you can't accomplish that. Uh, what are we all thinking of the judgment?
I, I think, what you're talking about, when it comes to mine, for me, is when someone has never had a board.
I was just gonna say.
And it's that first time person coming to the, to the microphone, and that's why I was thinking, just if there was a better way to prep them, to help them understand, this is not when we're gonna have a conversation.
But I, I was gonna say, we, you know, Rich has started having community talks. There are actual opportunities, we're working on having our board talks, we look at, so, it's not that one, no opportunities have been created for people who actually want to engage in a dialogue, to have a place where they can have that conversation. Whether people are showing up or not is, is separate. I think, I, I think, you know, having the form, you're gonna say, you know, this is something that you, you want to have, you know, this is how this looks, if you want follow-up, this is where you have it. And I think that's gonna really open you up to who wants to have actual follow-up versus who is there to have a public recording of their, of their comments. Because nothing's gonna, you can't, you just, you can't have a dialogue, it's, it's not, it's just not possible.
I was saying to, I, to Carl's point, like, there's certain people that, like, when they say something, like, I think about when Peggy talked about the volunteer thing, right? I think a lot of us want to be like, oh, that's a really good idea. The problem is that it becomes inequitable if we choose to respond to some people, and then if you have other people that we can respond to, or if some people are making a statement that is more of a political statement than an actual, somebody you want to have a conversation about. And so if we start picking and choosing, or if we get excited about what somebody says, and we're not excited about what somebody else says, then, then that the perception of that response could get really complicated. And so it's, if we have a consistent response of no, and so I like that it making the form a little bit more comprehensive, in that telling people what to expect. But that's my caution in wanting to, because they're, like, the, with Peggy, the volunteer one, I want to do that, they have a name, like, and so, like, I think that's the danger in when somebody giving us a, like, I remember the time a kid came, was like, I think, I think, should be a graduation requirement. And I was like, I have a few questions about IFL. But if we have follow-up questions with him, and we don't have follow-up questions with somebody who is like, you know, the soccer field flooded, I'm tired of the soccer field flooding, and it's like, yeah, well, it's like, you know, like, I'm not gonna have a conversation about the soccer field, but I, so, that's the, um, danger, I think, in allowing you to.
I agree, I mean, I understand people who have come regularly and, like, talking from the past, I think, or, but when you have people coming to the question, I'm putting on my lens of, uh, people who've never come up, never, they're, but how, kind of, you would say, might as well say, we have a budget, and, um, you follow up.
Maybe, I have enjoyed very hard, you know, I was, welcome, good evening, nodding, and I say, you know, when they're done, thank you, you know, that's just like.
Everyone's been saying, this is not a dialogue, this is an opportunity for you to, to share your opinion with us, you can follow up, so, and you can reinforce it with how you restructure the golden sheet. At some point, you're not gonna be able to individually, maybe, every person that comes in, they're, they're gonna have to be listening to what Carl is saying, they're gonna have to maybe look at their updated golden sheet, and that's just.
But I think we can, you know, we can't just, what's a body language, like, that, you know, are being, but I cannot act, do smile, or, I mean, there is something we can do better than a normal, right? That we can, I, I, I absolutely hear what you're saying, the board is on the board, and the board is on the board, and it is, the first time, it's like, very intimidating situation, it feels weird, you know?
I, I don't know, the first time I went, I don't know, you were on the board, and it was about.
That's on board, bro.
Language programming, you know, people report, and I said, well, aren't you gonna answer me?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
But I, I think putting, um, this, it's very clear, like, would you like follow up?
Do we have a checklist?
There is, I think we do have, there's one that says. I just, when I read it through, it's like, it feels very horny, and I thought, if we can make it more, you know, make it more competent, more conversational and friendly, you know, and say, we're happy you're here, you know, and.
Thank you for taking your time.
Say everything that you say verbally, say it out in the forums, use your opportunity to share your thoughts, and this is not, you know, we're not, we're not responding during the meeting, but if you, yeah, at least, explain to people how the function is looking.
Yeah.
So, you know, maybe a phone number, yes, I can have it, you can start it on, chat.
Right, right, and, and it could be as simple as saying, you know, you say, any, you know, managing with that form, exactly, and saying something along the, the follow-up process, we thank everyone that's not speaking, as in, as a mediator, which was not, this was not this, right? But we do invite you to, sure, we should, we definitely invite you to further dialogue, and this is how this one looks like. That's good, actually, it's a, okay, I, I, yeah, okay. Yeah, as, as you, I'm curious, as you looked at it, is there anything from a CEO perspective that you? Yeah, I really liked the last section on asking the right questions, that, I feel a lot of things away from that, you got it, right? Yeah, that is our last chapter, chapter six, the right questions. Yeah. I, I really liked that, I just, there were some really good, you know, takeaways for me, from the perspective of, uh, we, we very easily shut down dialogue by asking the wrong questions, and not, you can, can easily pass judgment based upon a response to it, a response to it, to a sort of, or a, a, a follow-up solely, and asking those more than any questions that are really helpful for people to enter into the conversation without any preconceived judgments. And that, if it relates to us having better relationships, a deeper conversation, the conversations getting to know one another at a deeper level, so much of our work is, is human work, is, definitely, is human work, and relationships are just such an important part of that, and it's so easy to be caught in the work, even in an organization like this, miss the opportunity to zero in, focusing on what's really important, which are our relationships. So that was, was a good reminder to me, asking those right questions, and the right next question, because oftentimes, not the first question, but it's the next question, that is the most important. Yeah, that's true, the question, right? I mean, that is absolutely like they would have saying something that I didn't ask a question about, but it's because we've had a good conversation at that point, or so they're, they're trusting enough that they'll learn something out of it. I love this, the studs turbo, it says, listen, 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 and if you do people talk, hey, always talk, why? Because no one has ever listened to them before in all their lives, perhaps they've never listened to themselves. And I think, and that is, that's an American thing, isn't it? It's like, that seven-second Japanese standard is a really interesting habit to do.
I wonder if this book doesn't come out, or if it's where else, you know? One way to get people to talk to you is to first share your vulnerabilities, and then ask a follow-up question. Um, this one was, um, like, one of my, and it's sort of, hey, nice to meet you, what are you doing here, when do you move here, and things, sort of saying, hi, I'm from Chicago, this is my first time coming to the conference, what do you think is good here? So it's like, you opened up, it's saying, hey, this is my first time being here, make yourself vulnerable, and say, who do you, so what you think is good? That's when they open up before the conference, and sort of saying, um, okay, with, with, you know, he, or something, um, always lead with such questions, and so. I mean, he doesn't talk about it here, in this book, but people have, you know, it's, yeah. We have jobs, I'm sure, isn't it? Maybe not, yeah. Yeah, that one says, make yourself vulnerable, and then ask a question, then they will be more open to it.
So, so there's one, one thing I have, as I read this book, I will tell you, it strikes me, is that you can do everything this doesn't hear, it doesn't mean the person does. Right? And that is the thing I get from the foster kids, sometimes I think, wow, I could have been a, as long as I had a phone with me and a, a credit card, I could have been, uh, cut off the etiquette some days, it's like, the, the kid is just getting, like, wants to get out, but, so there is, there is a part of this where it's like, you have to say, all right, I'm willing to accept that you're not gonna ask me a deep question, because I'm gonna spend all my time trying to get to know you. I think that is something I think I'm not as good at with constituents, is to be able to say, hey, I'm coming here to you, and if you ask them, just say, you're not coming, I don't know about you. Is that why I read this, something like that? Because it doesn't feel good, you know? It's like, and he talks about being, have the, in the arguments about the defensiveness, how that comes in, and it's like, trying to hold the defenses down, and try to, you know, see what it does, I get it, disagree with that, I get disagree with that, I think it was really interesting, and so. It's hard, you know, a person has to proceed to have the answers, to have access to the answers, to, to be able to listen to, and not give the answer, right?
Maybe, yeah, exactly. That is a vulnerable, I'm saying that we don't know all the answers, so we could, we make, we don't always make the right decisions, we try and make the right decisions.
You know, and I tell you, I mean, as long as I'm on the board, because every time, you know, we have a lot of contentious issue, you have a lot of angry people, frankly, who are up there saying things that I don't believe about them, my philosophy is always that, to appreciate that, that we live in a free country, people can say. My philosophy is always that to appreciate that, that we're living in a free country, and people can say things that, you know, they believe in, that others are gonna get necessarily believe in. And so it's kind of, and it's not only being an empty vessel, but it's looking at saying, this is progress in action, um, and this is moving, you know...
I've become, I've been comfortable walking today with disagreement.
Yeah.
I, I have, personally, I've been much more comfortable believing that it's okay to disagree, that it's, it's, it's okay to...
You can't reach resolution, right?
But, but I'm, I'm okay with us having a disagreement, and I can walk away from it, I'm asking the car, I'm gonna do that, because, uh, to be educated by nature, fix things, uh, right, they want things to be right, um, and reality is that that's just, uh, that's not, like, understanding that it's okay to leave something hanging.
Sometimes also reading the ways that, or rather, we are educated to study, this is an opportunity to, to, you know, to educate, to, to, the rest of them are necessary, and they make the new things, and people are...
Remembering those, the tertiary issues, like, how is it impacting education, like, so that we don't get sucked into the, the emotion, the secondary or tertiary issue, but that we think about how is that impacting the, the ability for the child to, and keeping that lens, like, it's democracy in action, why is this thing important for, I mean, food service, right, like, why, why are we having a conversation about, I have quality food, like, because if you have quality food, then you're gonna have better, you're gonna process it better, you're gonna better bring hours, like, I wanna make sure that you have quality foods, whether our students have the most nutrition, which is proven to help them learn, not because I wanna...
Taste your vegetables, no?
Right, like, I don't, I don't, I don't mean, you know, I need good, like, the thing is, it's easy sometimes to get sucked into the, like, woo, let's, like, let's really care, let's do this, and, um, I don't know, I said that last year when you were testing the box, like, it's really easy to get, you know, distracted by the shiny new things, and all the conversations about furniture, like, I never would have thought, and then you sit there, like, oh, kids do learn better, oh, they are distracted by that bar and their back, like, the furniture does matter, but it matters to you, so that it's about the kids to learn, and making sure that we're always driving, especially at this table, making sure that we're always driving to the back.
Takes them to a happy place where they can, uh, that's...
You know, I must have totally missed this, but when we were about this, we're always, the kids could draw...
Doesn't even affect us.
Oh, yes, on the desk, I saw that, yes, yeah. And they can erase those things, you know, it's only...
Right. You would be impressed, kudos, because in one of the bathrooms, they're using, they were using the COVID barriers, just hang up their, hang up their...
Yeah, they've seen those, those sneeze guards, repurposed all over the district, it's so fine to see it, like, that's, I know.
They put those papers on the...
Yeah, they're using the seals, so, yeah, the seals, yeah. I, I just thought that the desk, they were drawing, that's not, wow, that's, that's, that's...
And do you remember when we went to Florida, they were doing their math on the desk, and then he raised it, and same thing here.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, well, why, uh, any other things that you wanna share out the first section of this? So I guess my only question is, um, do you wanna, do you wanna keep going in this, do you want to... I, I will tell you that from a specific, relevant conversation with us, section one was really the most relevant, and then the rest of the book, I think, goes into a lot more to personal relationships and stuff like that. We can keep going with it, if you wanna keep going with it, we'll, we'll, um, assign the next couple chapters, and, um, if you wanna stop at this point, it's, it's, our...
So the practical person, he wants to say that this was a meeting where it was a little bit lighter in terms of the agenda, um, you know, like, it's like, not...
Uh, most meetings are not, and then to tack this on at ten o'clock at night is, is a lot, it might be better, you know, especially for next meetings, a little bit heavier, which I expected, to be the focus that they're...
Oh, yeah, I, I mean, I, I'll slot this in wherever we have space, I've done, that's what I've done so far, but I'm wondering, do we wanna go on something else, or do we wanna finish this?
The next part, he talks about COVID, and, uh, right, as in, is it...
I think it's on, it is probably, you know?
I mean, it's a good book, I mean, that whole thing is like, if, and, and we can keep going, we can probably find a lot of stuff, I thought.
I'd say, the next section, I feel like had a couple of things that might be, like, blindness, hard conversations, and that, that might be useful things for us to, to tackle, um...
So maybe chapter eight, nine, or eleven?
Yeah, I mean, it's so easy for you, yeah, but I was thinking, should we do all the parts, like, part two, if we did part two for twenty-two, and what you need to follow up on?
No, probably, I think, uh... Yeah, so right now, what we have, like, so, so for me, is we're doing, um, a review of, um, you, you're gonna do a new, uh, textbook, or, no, it's not, it'll be textbook, because it's like, it'll be highlighted, and I'm gonna be looking through that right now, so that'll be, and we're gonna lean into that, uh, just kind of a, a high, uh, and a worldview of where we are with, you know, that application, that's why we're, here's one. So how, what, part that we need, uh, the map adoption, so that's what we have planned, plus whatever business items we have, so that's it for me, so, so probably chapter some days. So why don't we say, section two for me, and then we'll be assured as we, you know, and then just see if anyone has anything, and then we can sign in, if we wanna do section three, although two and three are kind of, they're connected, right? One, one is struggles, and the next one is strengths, so, um, they're, like I said, good book, I said, you know, but, when I finished reading it the first time, I thought, section one was clearly the most direct relative to all of your, your, your... Okay, so we'll, we'll find out doing that, and if, if it changes all...
Do you have another candidate to...
I don't, does anybody have a candidate, did you have one?
I can send, there's a book about anxiety and the way, this book, it's a new book by Jonathan Peet, and he writes, he did, he's written a lot about the way that social media has, like, changed, so he wrote, um, after Mallow, and talks about the way algorithms and social media, do people still agree, and so, like, how do you, and so now... Yeah, so, but he, so he wrote a book about anxiety, it was the, um, H A I D T.
H A I D T.
Yeah, so, um, but I made my students read this stuff about social media algorithms every semester, because it's just really good to kind of see, it's called, that Anxiety Generation, I think.
Yeah, that's it, because you sent me the title, and I thought, oh, that might be a contender.
And so the, um...
Have you read it, or have you, or did you just saw it there?
It just, it just came out, like, two weeks ago, so it just caught my eye, because it's the, um, so it's the anxiety generation, how the great people, like, which time was causing, and then, so, yeah, so it's just about the ways that kids are interacting...
Certainly relevant, yeah.
The way kids are interacting with social media, and then how that's making people, yeah, and the way it's, it's taught the anxiety generation, so... So, so it's just talking, you know, it's like, parents and educators.
It was geared toward parents and educators.
So that would be, yeah, so that's, uh, we could do that, it was the summer, I mean, good, we don't think it's off, for sure, you know, we could agree to have a summer, I'd, 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 well, we can, chapter do a little bit of dialogue, so, that'd be, that's, that's, yeah, so... Okay, all right, cool, I like that.
So, I'll, I'll send it to me, and, and something, you know, so, we'll, 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 social media, which, 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 we, we have, we just, um, so, and it's, he's probably...
So, I'll send you again. Yeah, so, yeah, research showing it takes you out, once you're distracted by the text, or maybe it takes, or, you know, to be able to refocus, and so, um, when you see kids, I was, um, in high school, this, and, and, like, exactly, before, five, different classrooms, and then for high, and some of the classrooms, you're like, you're doing this, and underneath, they're, you know, on your phone, and you're like, you're clearly not learning the logic, and, you know, so it's, it's, even if you, even if you get called up, your brain is still gonna take time to, to refocus. Well, with students, starting to... Which means you're not there, you're not present with people, physically, I mean, aside from the learning, you're also not with the people that you're actually, what this study did, because there's a lot, there's a lot of studies on technology relationships, that's from this specific book, and social, I think, this is a study, yeah. So it might be interesting to read that book, but then also maybe consider one or two other sources, which, like, maybe even, um, something about cell phones in schools, you know, if there are any, like, all of those other sources, so that way we...
Yeah.
So that way we can connect what we're, what we're reading about social media, but then directly connect it to the work that we're, we're trying to do here, um, so that we were discussing those things in the same, I think, I think that would be, uh, I think, did I just talk about how social media is causing anxiety, and to, or, like, connect it to...
Good, okay, good plan for the summer, okay, I'm in, oh, I...
I have another topic, um, or, or community conversation?
I was gonna do other at this point, but you want to, sorry.
The, so, you know, I think we have a lot, but today, I was just gonna say, um, moving back to last month, seeing everybody, wanna say thanks for, uh, moving back, moving on that information on the high school recording, and supporting, so I appreciate the, um, I appreciate that information, and...
Can that be shared with us, I think?
It did, I did share it, I did share it. It was in an email, it's still, you know, that, that's, I think she sent it during the meeting, I was just...
It was in the, in one, okay, yes, okay.
That was it?
Oh, there's that, oh, I thought, yeah, everything's, okay, everything.
Today was, uh, algebra one, and, and, uh, we had very impressive teachers, and very impressive mentors that were leading the classroom charge, um, I learned a lot, the students were, I thought, very focused, they were writing their notes on the desk, and it was over, it was over, but there was a lot of learning, there was a lot of deep thinking, that, I was impressed that, uh, every one of the teachers that were motivating the students to, and, and to come up with the answers, and, and to think about how they derived that, uh, situation much more than, I mean, here, problems to do, and turn it, and, and they, they were thinking about, meaning, not just doing, and, uh, and coming up with, uh, uh, answers, that we had to have on paper, that teacher, that check off says, check off, uh, job, uh, uh, was only the standard, or, or, coming up with, uh, the, you know, help, uh, with, uh, with the thought process that got to that point, so, uh, it was the fastest two hours that I thought I'd see, uh, and, and, and math is usually not my strong point, but I came away with a very big respect for both tone out in the admin classroom, and whole classrooms.
Which one is about community conversation, and what we had, one, when we did our own certification, one, we did have one, and, you know, I don't think, I don't, you did, no, he said, if we want to have one, someone else, they, you know, and I said, yes, I would say...
I already said, I'll do the fall one, so, yeah.
I know, you two said, uh, so, um, Julie sent that out, and I think that, Julie sent out, or to Luke Hall, and, um, Nina and Matt and I have filled it out, and you guys both said you do, you wanna do the fall, so you can do it, um, so we haven't yet come up with a date, um, that works, and which one, um, so we need to, if we are serious about doing a community conversation, we should try and do the one sometime in April, at least, and, and April, I think, she sent out a bunch, she, she sent out a bunch of dates, so...
Were there any ones, were there two of us?
Uh, yes, there were a few that they were with a few of us.
So why can't, so related needs to do for your lesson?
Yeah, so...
So, so really, we have three, it's impossible, so, we can set it up then?
I, I mean, I thought that was the whole point of filling it out, to see when, when it was over, like...
She was, she sent it out, saying, well...
Yeah, as long as you, if you've got two or three, just grab them.
I said, I'll do the fall, I'm one of those people, I like to get my applications out.
Well, there are too many people doing the fall, wanting to do the fall, so which is...
No, 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 sorry, the spring, that's why I filled out the spring one, so, I mean, if there are several days where the...
There was two days, there were two days.
So it's, I mean, I, I, okay, I did just, yeah.
And if we do pick it, um, I said, I wanna do it, sorry, I meant spring, because I like to just, I wanna get, get, I... There were multiple days, dur- during the day, during the evenings, during weekends, and I think, um, then the question is, um, do we wanna do it in a school building or outside, um...
Well, the, why, it depends on, I would, one has to, I think, depends on the time, so make sure that if we can't have it in a school building, um, I don't know, because some of the...
They were not during the day, okay, I thought they were the evenings and weekends.
Well, you, you guys can, you know, right?
Okay.
I mean, if it's possible to maybe do it at the preschool, that might be an opportunity for people to, so, but I don't know how facilities work after hours, right, like, I don't wanna commit to, I think...
You're gonna be, in, with, with, yeah.
I'd say, I think it would be good for, to let the communities, the buildings, with the bond, I think it's, if it's in the buildings, it would be good to let the communities with us, but there's the option, yeah, custodial piece.
So I work with Julie, I work with Julie, and I try and, um, Julie would work with administration, and...
Just pick the date that was best for you, you've got everything.
And maybe find a building that maybe already has something new, or, that is new, yeah, or, or that is new, T C C H S, or Troy High Media Center, one of those, um, yeah, and this one.
Um, second question, I was at the, um, robotics competition, um, there were two weekends, actually, in the row, that they had two big events, and the campus festival, so, then, um, they were, one of the question that the Troy Athens, first, first person was asking, and the coach was asking, is, if, um, we were gonna have a dedicated, have a facility for the robotics at Athens, um, and I said, they will probably incorporate that in the plan, so you're building, but I did not know, and I was gonna follow up with you, and I answered that question.
Yeah, there was, there was, uh, there was space, that the temp was providing space for robotics at both high schools, we have, in, we have a new general airspace, but, but it's, that was something that came out, I'm clear, from the facilitation team, that, um, had a dedicated robotics space for some point.
The, so the intent is to have some space provided in the, and the follow-up to that is, you mentioned something about using the equipment in Troy High for machining and all of that, and then there are several humans or several volunteers who are, um, who have the, who can use the equipment, or who are certified and qualified to use the equipment, yet somehow, there's some restrictions against using them, so I wasn't sure, so, yes, yeah, so...
Yeah, I don't know.
You're talking about kitchen equipment?
No, robotics provides, like, it's machining, the machine shop, kind of thing, so, that's the, yeah, the...
So our teachers have come in, it's nice to allow robotics kids to use it, so that they can facilitate use of the equipment, but we can't allow outside, through a whole team, to be able to use the equipment, that's, that's still, so...
So we do have enough certified teachers who can do those, like, or...
I mean, it doesn't, oftentimes, robotics is not in the building, at the same time, our teacher, so that's...
So that was the problem, seems like that's the problem, that they're lacking in, in, in coordination, isn't it?
And I know Shree spent a lot of time talking with the administration at Athens, so I would just continue to kind of interrupt him to work with them, and I know they work with the folks who are in that space, because Athens actually does have a dedicated robotics space that doesn't exist at Troy High School, so I think there's, you know, there's, there's always... always an interest to continue to grow and provide those spaces, and he's an incredible advocate for those opportunities for our kids, so I'm sure he, he shared a few of those things he's mentioned about, which is what makes him a great position.
Sounds good, um, and then the, um, yeah, this morning, when we attended the, um, algebra, the double algebra class, they get two credits, but then they still have to take four years of math, right, this two credit doesn't help them, and are you saying that?
It counts as one of their four, it counts as two of their four credits of math, but they still need to progress through the graduation requirement for algebra two, so depending on what that looks like for students, they will continue through that, that program, and they also have to take a math related course during their senior year.
So they, they can take a M A two, which may come under a math, or that two aren't necessarily part of just natural, you know?
Right, so there's many of our electives that come as a math, a math related course.
Like such security or whatever, those kind of things, yeah, that's what I'm trying to say.
Um, so mostly for our administrators, the Women of Tomorrow Graduation Lunch is this nineteenth at the Henry, obviously, well, it's, but.
April.
Oh, that's really late.
April nineteenth at the Henry, um, eleven to one, um, so I have a table, so, and then, I guess, the only other thing that I would say is, um, I'm curious for the rest of the robotics, that you really visit the algebra classes, to get feedback from students on how they like the classes, and maybe once that happens, um, here's perhaps.
That's a Logan's.
I'm trying to figure out.
I know, I can't tell, I don't know where she's going with it.
I have heard some comments, you know, were saying. At dinner, at dinner, she was saying something, and I heard it in a different space, but it's all the same comments, and I had the same thoughts, so.
And then, Christine, you have recommended a book, that we might love, the confidence book, it's just called Confidence, yeah, it's written by Roosevelt Ross Cantor, she's a, um, business school teacher at Haru, at H B S, and she looks at, she, it's, it's an interesting book, and it's really focused on, like, she uses, uh, sports to talk about, um, how you build strong teams, and instead, she studies winning streaks and losing streaks of teams, and how you break, you know, how you break out a losing streak, and, um, kind of a study of humans and that, so, I always, I find it fascinating and really applicable to the learning for, for high school age children, but probably children of any age, but specifically high school, in the feelings that students, um, have about their abilities in certain content areas, when they arrive at math, right, after maybe three really tough years in middle school of math, and here I am emerging as a, as a freshman, um, the psychology behind that experience, um, is really important for us to understand, and so, we were talking about that a little bit today, we were talking about intensified algebra, which is a double block class, but in that class, probably if it's thirty to forty percent of the course, you build on, um, building relationships and building the confidence of students to be able to problem solve and address challenges that are there, so, um, I guess.
It's like breaking a losing streak.
Yeah, right, exactly, you're right.
Hey, interesting book, first, man.
Yeah, anything? Uh, just the, before break, leave yourself a break, we had our, uh, community board meeting, and, uh, that went really, really well, it was, uh, we had about twenty-five people or so that, that showed up, uh, and it was Chantel and Evan, uh, working together, some of them in this conversation.
This was a chance, a chance.
Yeah, yeah, went, went really well, the feedback was, was extremely positive and overwhelming, the feedback was, we, we would like to do this again, so I think based on the feedback, there will, there will be another, there'll be a round two, uh, Chantel and Evan, you're really looking for a similar book that, um, will, uh, cut, the nice thing about CAS, it cut, it cuts very nicely across our community, uh, and provided some, you know, it provided onramps into the conversation from multiple aspects of our community perspective, our community and social media.
Okay, can you participate?
Um, there were, mostly it was parents, yeah, mostly parents, there were a couple of staff members, um, Chris was there, I was there, John was there, Chantel, Evan, Natalie was there, so there were a lot of school folks, and then the others were, were parents, we felt really good, we had quite a few that signed up to attend, and probably twenty-five or so attended, CAS was a challenging book to read, it's not an easy book.
Can I borrow your, uh, yeah?
So, well, we will do it again, uh, just don't know that the title will be, and what we'll be, but, yeah, we'll obviously see, yeah, yeah, uh, spring, our spring updates are underway, so I think Julie put the updated, uh, schedule in the, in the communicate, or in the, um, work folder, so you're welcome to any of those, whether it be a staff, or whether it be a P T L, uh, we did L this morning, for staff, I, I was able to meet with the Troy High P T L last evening, but we're going to leave this tomorrow morning, and then, uh, for Thursday, uh, so, pick one if you like, and you're welcome to attend. We're focusing on, it's, it's about a twenty minute, uh, presentation, uh, it's focused, this, this one in particular kind of focuses on highlights, uh, from the year, but we're talking about, uh, talking about budget, bond, uh, uh, website, yeah, website.
Guardian Coalition.
Guardian Coalition.
Early College.
Early College, can you put it together? Put it together, it's, it's all part of the presentation, yeah, I think you have to put it in the communicate for you to see, it's, um, it's, it's pretty, it's pretty high overview, and then depending upon the audience, like, zero in, uh, so for instance, when we're talking to staff, we're talking about budget, well, part of that budget conversation is, is, uh, is that something that is of interest to them, so we spent a lot of time talking about contract, and how contract connects the budget, and so forth, uh, and like, and talking with parents, talking about, what we're able to talk about, we'll be able to talk about contract as well, how it's going, um, the dates that we have scheduled, which are, um, comments, terms of, rankings of, so, reasonable time, parents wonder about calendar, of course, if we can do as much as possible about calendar, so it's, it's, uh, it's chock full of good information, I'll put that in the communicate so you can see it, but again, if you are, if you want, it's, you're very excited, that's it.
Um, I'll, I'd like to let you know that Wilson Prowse from, from, that did our second application yesterday, or was that today? It's been a long day, because she has. Right, and, uh, so, fingers crossed, she said this time, what'd she say, eighty local letters of support were attached to this particular obligation, so, uh, we're, we're trying to flood them, I said, with our luck, they'll come back and say, with that much support, you can get funding from self, based on, so, hopefully that's not the case, so that's it, that's all.
A lot of poor people support.
Right, right, um, and then, okay, well, I was gonna say, so, um, folks going to Nollins, um, are, is everybody gonna be on a Thursday night, is that the, so it's for us, then, okay, Karen and I are leaving tomorrow morning, we're dragging, so, yeah, so, Nashville tomorrow, and then Nollins, and, how like? Now, I was.
Probably Michael Johnson, you guys can bring us.
You can text us where, I don't, I don't think, right, I don't think it's, I don't know.
Yeah, is that YouTube?
Yeah, we're on the same plane, and, yeah, and I think, and my husband's coming, but he's not at the same thing.
Okay, so, and then, all of us are doing the Friday morning, school tours without students, yeah, without students at the schools, that's gonna be an interesting, uh, tour, I was very curious about this, because, you know, they're all charged, yeah, that was the solution, was to make them all charter, and I'm like, okay, besides being gross and inefficient, I wonder if they're getting anything on their list, so, um, so it'll be interesting to see what we can help them.
I, I got told, you know, the last few times, those school visits, I was like, I don't.
I know, that's why I'm going early, because that's what you said, because I get so often disappointed with the programs that I like, and you, you, the last time, you guys came back, and I'm like, oh, I wish I could.
The San Diego ones.
Yeah, San Diego one, I wish I could have been there.
I was looking at the, there's some good stuff.
That was when I was flying from Whistler, remember, that was the twenty-seven hour flank day, yeah.
Yeah, and I was, there's the topics, yeah, the topics, and then, there's, the first keynote was actually somebody who's connected to education.
Oh, my gosh, wow, that's exciting.
You know, movie actresses.
Yeah, exactly.
I was, I was like, oh, my goodness, it's a, it's an educational topic, I'm so excited.
Okay, well, then, I'm, and I'll see you three in, you know, Nollins, and then I'll start.
I just, I just wanted to, to thank our, our finance team, um, there's, there's, uh.
For what?
For what?
Not in our, no, I, I.
That's your role, that's your role.
No, I, I've said this before, but in the last year, I mean, you know, neighbors come up to me, they go, hello, board service, and I, you know, and I, and I, I've actually said this, I said, you know, there's things you don't realize, you know, the, the schools are there to teach, right, but you don't necessarily realize what some of the critical components are to actually make that happen, to make it possible, and I said, the one thing is, like, I didn't realize how amazing our finance department was, and how important it was to have a really skilled and professional finance department, because you just don't think about that when you think about schools, and then you have, you know, Birmingham and Ann Arbor now, and, you know, and, and then you realize how, you know, how there's all of these, these different departments that are not necessarily directly connected to teaching, that are really important to be able to have, to have the teaching, so, um, so, I think.
So, thank you for, yeah, there'll be no living with her now, but, yeah. Thanks, it just, that wasn't, they don't have, that's why. No, but that is, that is, he didn't even reply to me, and I said, no, he said, come on, tell me what's going on in Ann Arbor, with, you know, how do you make a twenty-five million dollar error, um, you know, and it's like, if you have, if you're forecasting the ten thousand student drop shouldn't have been a surprise, and the other thing is, that's only ten million dollars, you know, when you multiply that out, so it's like, okay, or that was a thousand, right, times ten thousand a student, it's like, that's not adding up to twenty-five million, but, uh, it turned out was.
The pension money.
It was pension money.
They brought it in, showed it as revenue, but they didn't see.
For not to take it out.
But they didn't take it, and that was fourteen, and that was fourteen million.
It's just pastor money for us.
Yeah, and we were like, how did nobody, I mean, we see that, we look at that every year, right, it's like, there it is, money in, money out, and nobody at the table at any point noticed that.
So they probably get twenty-five million more from the pensions.
No, 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 fourteen, in this budget, they had, well, in this, they had.
So ten million of that was allegedly because of the, the thousand student drop, and then the other fifteen was because of, or thirteen was because of, uh, so.
And I, and I remember how many times, uh, Rick said, okay, you see this money here, it's really not here, it's going out here, this is not revenue, this is, yeah, and at least like three or four days, and so, um, you know, and that's probably should be a little difficult accounting, in, in that line, but just, just the, I think, just the, the explanation and, and really, um, in any case, I, that, that's something that I've learned over the last year, is you, you don't think about, you know, how important some of these other things are to really making the district work, because you think of it as kids go to school to learn, yeah, but in order to be able to, to do that, and have some other programming, and everything else, really, there's all of these other supports that needs to, that needs to be.
No, it's true, I've watched, and his team doing this amazing stuff, not with money, so, and I, I told Ronnie, yeah, too, it's like, you don't realize how important finances are, and how important good people in your place are, so, in order to do what you want to do.
So would you guys take someone from the private sector, the finance director, or is the requirement they have to have?
We were more honed in on school experience last time, but I think we've broadened our, broadened our.
Needs, yeah.
No, we're, we're optimistic with the timing, and such that we will get, I guess, I think we are hoping to, if you're absolutely happy, yeah.
Good, and I, I had somebody, I'm not sure if they're, they're retired or some, um, private sector, I'm sure, maybe still there somewhere.